Friend?
Here.
Cooper? Edman?
Here.
Max Power?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Stefka?
Here.
Wheeler?
Not here.
German Teller?
Here. Well, the Traverse City School Board has a quorum, so you have to call your meeting.
That's right. Um, Traverse City School Board is in session, and I'd like to have Kena call the roll, please. Mr. Apple is out of town. Ms. Cranwell?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Ms. McValley working this afternoon? Ms. Puckett is teaching this afternoon? Ms. Rich?
Here.
And Mr. Tan?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. While we're...I'm gonna turn this over to the Sheriff, Bensley, so that he can explain his side of it. Uh, but first, I...to me, this is a important enough program that's going on. I hope that we can come up with something to keep it going in some shape or form at any rate, so, uh, let's give it a try.
Can I interrupt a minute? Normal procedure for us would be to have public comment prior to opening.
You're right, and I didn't read it.
Oh, I didn't, okay.
It's on here.
It's on my agenda.
So, I think you need to do public comment, we need to do official public comment. I assume we can do it together.
I think we could do it together.
I would think so.
Yeah, public comment, who'd like to speak? Come up and give your name and...
Looks like I'm the only liaison here, but I know everybody else is out working, so if you could bear with me. First of all, good afternoon, commissioners from both sides, TCAPS as well as Grand Traverse County. My name is Paul Postal, Jr., and I want to thank all of you for allowing me to speak for a moment. I'm currently the school liaison officer at the West Senior High School. I've worked at West Senior High School for eight years. In those eight years, we have worked very closely with TCAPS, staff and parents to try to ensure that our children will make it safe and sound with little to no negative contact with law enforcement. As a liaison officers, we have cultivated relationships with both the staff and kids over the years. Those relationships have been proven to be essential to the development of our kids to young adults. Because of the liaison program, I believe we have been successful in steering some of our children down the right path to good citizenship rather than allowing them to travel down the wrong path. The West Senior High School is like a little village of about 2,000 persons, students and staff. The fact that we have an officer at the school telegraphs a message to students that law enforcement is assigned here. This alone has been a huge deterrent. This fact alone gives our kids a moment of pause before they choose to make a bad choice. The kids know that a police officer is assigned to work in the school. They know that if they break the law, in some respects, because it's on school property, the penalties may be enhanced. We teach them that. They think before they commit a crime. They think before bringing a bag of dope to school or bringing a weapon to school. We train as police liaison officers to take immediate action. If a critical incident were to arise at the school, for example, in an active shooting situation, if I am in the building or nearby, it's solely my responsibility to act and stop that threat. As liaison officers, we do not have the luxury of waiting for backup to arrive. We have to engage that threat and stop it as quick as possible. I also wanted to mention quickly that TCAPS principals and staff have no law enforcement powers. They have no authority to enforce laws of the state or make custodial arrests. The fact that a police officer is in the school and works directly with the principals provides them with some leverage in keeping safety, order and discipline in the school. The kids will know if that leverage is gone. What the principal does or says to maintain safety, order and discipline in our schools will not be as effective. Not funding these positions will cause that influence to be removed from the school. The very minute we are pulled from the schools, the kids will know it. And it will open up territory for those persons who want to harm our children. Liaisons are specially trained police officers that work with young people and parents. We provide a first level of contact with law enforcement, and we try and make it a positive one, even in light of some of our students committing crimes. I understand and can appreciate the commission's concerns about why TCAPS can no longer fund the liaison positions. But this is a position that cannot go unfunded or be eliminated. As a parent of a student who attends a school in our county where there is a school liaison officer, it does offer me some peace of mind to know that a policeman is assigned to my son's school. We send our kids to county schools hoping they will be protected. School is supposed to be a safe place we send our kids. Unfortunately, times have changed. Our children are our most sacred responsibilities. Knowing firsthand what liaison officers deal with on a daily basis in today's society, I feel absolutely we need to, uh, keep these positions. I want to say thank you for your time, and I hope that in the end, we can come to an arrangement to keep the liaison program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, uh, we have three representatives from Kingsley. Do you want to say anything before we get to rolling, Mr. Gallexon, or...
Um, no, we just...
Okay.
Uh, thank you, I'm Tom Bensley, Sheriff of Grand Traverse County. The county board a couple of months ago requested this meeting so that, uh, they could, uh, talk with the school board directly and indicate to them that this is a partnership that has been for a long time. We have, uh, two officers here, Under Sheriff Alger and Captain Dave Meacham, who have, uh, present or made a program to speak with you about. I think the county board's position a couple of months ago was that they wanted to talk directly with the school board, let them know how valuable they feel the program is and convey that to the school board. So, I'll let Under Sheriff Alger, excuse me, and Captain Meacham give you their presentation on the program, how it works, what it does, and probably have any questions you might have for them or me after they're done.
Thank you, uh, many of you know me, I'm Nate Alger, I'm Under Sheriff of the sheriff's office, and I have two things to say before we start. Number one, uh, we have breakfast or lunch provided at six o'clock, so we're gonna break at six no matter what. That's a joke. Secondly, uh, I did not pick this podium. He's as tall as I am. Uh, as the sheriff said a couple of months ago, the board of commissioners asked that we get together with the school board members from Kingsley and TCAPS to talk about the importance of this program. I believe that each member sitting here knows, uh, the importance of the program, but I question whether or not everybody understands what each officer does on a daily basis and the value attached to each of their activities. So, we constructed a program today with that intention in mind to bring forward to you what school liaison officers do and what we believe the value of that, uh, program is. Listed here as objectives, um, we're gonna provide the history of the relationship between the schools and the sheriff's office, tell you what they do, talk about the funding, the origination of the funding, when that happened and how it happened, and provide you information as to what the sheriff's office will be able to do absent this funding, and then have some discussion about that. What our position is here is important for you to understand. Much like TCAPS administration and Kingsley administration, the sheriff's office does not allocate funding. We don't go out and generate it, or the board of commissioners does that for us. They tell us how much money we're gonna have in our budget. We decide, like you decide, how we're gonna disperse that and how we're gonna provide law enforcement in the best interest of the county and the most efficient operation or method of operation. Uh, I will say right up front, I had an opportunity to address the TCAPS board back in February, and I worked with Mr. Gallexon and the board and the Kingsley Task Force for their budget. Uh, I know the situation that you guys are in, I respect it. An $8 million shortfall, and I forgot the shortfall, forgive me. It's significant, no matter what, and I watched some of the decisions being made about liaison officers versus, uh, teachers. Certain programs that the schools offer versus, you know, educators and what they're gonna cut. And those aren't very easy decisions. So, we're not here to criticize, and we're not here to point fingers. We're here to try to show you the value of this program. Uh, first of all, the history, Sheriff Jack Hanfield made a promise during his campaign prior to 1980 that he would put an officer at the West, now West Junior High School, then the only junior high school. Uh, the first officer was Dennis Halverson, he was a detective. At the same time, Detective Roger McAvoy was assigned to the Traverse City, uh, from the Traverse City Police Department to the high school, then the only high school. Uh, from there, we added the East Middle School and the West High School and Kingsley area schools. The first West High School liaison officer was a guy by the name of Nate Alger. I think he was the greatest liaison officer ever.
No offense, Detective Postal.
He's been there a lot longer than I have, he's got seniority. Uh, Detective Roloff has been in Kingsley for about five years, he was hired in 2004. Uh, he is also a Kingsley resident. Uh, Detective Morton has been at East Middle School for about four and a half years, and prior to that, she was at the Kingsley High School for about a half a year. Detective Matt McKinley has been at West Middle School for about five years. And Detective Paul Postal, he has seniority, and everybody with about eight years at West High School. We do, uh, I want to show you some statistics, uh, give you an idea of what law enforcement officers do. Uh, we are police officers, we do police things, uh, we're not educators, well, to some people we are, but, uh, this is what we do. We have two different ways of capturing statistics. One is through something called computer-aided dispatching, which is through central dispatch, and then we track our own statistics as well, and I'll explain it as we go on. But the first, I want to show you the CAD capture of complaints at the physical addresses of the school. Uh, Kingsley Middle School in 2008 CAD captured 18 calls for service, 12 calls for service in 2009, and so far in 2010, only eight. The types of calls they get are shown on the screen there, assaults, weapons, threats, bomb threats, stolen property, larcenies, drug violations, et cetera. Kingsley High School, see the calls for service, same type of calls, assaults, weapons, bomb threats, runaway suicide attempts, accidents. East Middle School, very similarly, a little higher call volume for the middle school. 2010, Matt's hand or Janice handled 12 calls thus far this year. More importantly than the numbers, I want you to understand the types of complaints that these officers are handling. Uh, Detective McKinley handles 21 so far in 2010. And Detective Postal, for a lot of reasons that we can talk about later, handles significantly more calls at the West High School. And there's a reason for that. Uh, mostly because the officers, a lot of activity around that school, accidents, assists, traffic stops, uh, law enforcement on the road do traffic stops, um, and those are all catalogued at that address. More important than the numbers right now, I want to talk about the types. And basically what you see there, that's what we see across the board through the entire county. Those are the types of crimes that we see and law enforcement handles on a day-to-day basis. Add to that, these are small communities. Uh, West High School, I heard Detective Postal say there's close to 2,000 students, I had 1,500. But I know that TCAPS is about 10,000 students, is that accurate? Uh, that's a lot of students. And, uh, each of these schools has in excess of 1,000 students. Kingsley has about 1,500 combined, is that accurate? And just as a note, when I was researching this, uh, the 2004 FBI crime report, their average number of officers per thousand recommendation is 2.2 in the Midwest, 2.3 nationwide. And each school has one officer assigned, and granted, they have a lot of officers as resources for them. The school liaison officer for Kingsley, here are his stats specifically. These are actual physical investigations that he has completed. Uh, he's done reports on these complaints. Some incidents don't warrant a report, some incidents can be documented on a daily activity report. I met Johnny, Johnny did this, I told Johnny not to do that again. Uh, some reports like this require a lot more detail, an actual investigation reduced down to a narrative police report that can be tracked. These are his statistics. Now, mind you also, we track complaints on a calendar year in the school districts. Obviously, they operate in a school year, so these are overlapping. Uh, 2009 to 2010, if you took half of his complaints in 2009 from September forward, that would give you an accurate description of what the 2009, 2010 year would look like. Same thing for East Middle School, um, West Middle School, and West High School. In terms of what the county, the sheriff's office handles, I want you to understand this as well and the relationship between the schooli- schools and the county. We handle about 47,000 complaints or incidents every year. Now, an incident is a traffic stop, it's a warrant attempt, it's a subpoena, it's something that a police officer is physically doing. Uh, they're not just sitting in a car, that's not tracked. Uh, they're not on break, that's not tracked. Something that they're actually physically doing. That equals out to about 130 interactions a day that officers are involved in. Here's some of the things that they do, um, all the way from property crimes, person crimes, to paper service. And this is what law enforcement officers do every day, not necessarily school liaison officers, but law enforcement in general. Uh, school liaison officers, they have a little more direct interaction and specified duties. The first thing I want to talk about is the information sharing. Back in two, or 1999, the state enacted the state school-wide information policy. We were instructed on this at the beginning of it, and it's kind of changed since its inception, but basically it mandates that law enforcement and schools work together, and they have to share information about specific crimes. Um, they list the crimes that have to be shared between law enforcement and schools. They list the procedure to be used when an incident occurs at a school, and what is to be, uh, the initial notification of, from the school officials to law enforcement, and what is to be provided. You guys, you guys feel that we do a pretty good job controlling that in terms of the information sharing? If you guys have questions about any of these slides, please stop me while we're there so I can, uh, address questions if you have them. Continuing, uh, the, the Act describes the amount and content of the information the school should be relaying to law enforcement and specifically identifying that before law enforcement talks to a student, that the parent has to be contacted. Um, you know, students are, uh, obviously any age, uh, but law enforcement recognizes a student as an adult at age 17. State law recognizes that. There are different ways you process juveniles and you handle juveniles because the law requires that they, that special set of circumstances exist. And law enforcement officers just can't go grab onto a 15-year-old and have a conversation with them. Law enforcement officer can go ahead and grab ahold of any one of you, anybody who's over 17, and have a conversation with them unless they're in school. And schools have policies and procedures that dictate how law enforcement can interact with their students, and rightfully so. Maybe more importantly than the school's responsibilities identified through that policy is what is required of law enforcement. Law enforcement is mandated to report any crime that involves one of their students. We have to report that to the school if it could pose a threat to a student, staff, or any damage to property. That is a significant responsibility because there's not a lot of crime that a student is involved in that would not fit one of those markers. This information exchange happens right now through the liaison officers. There is no official mechanism that we have established, nor, to my knowledge, the schools have established to exchange this information. The school liaison officers take care of that. Law, this is some of the things law requires, reporting of physical violence, gang activity, possession of drugs, intoxicants, trespassing and property crimes. Really, there's not, there are a couple of things that law enforcement officers do outside of those markers, but there's not a lot. Each school also has a school response guide that dictates how they will respond to certain critical events. Uh, a few of them are listed here, bomb threats, armed subjects, physical assaults, intruders. And the school liaison officers have historically been a resource for this. I worked with Assistant Principal Rob New back in, uh, back in my time at West Senior High to develop the West High School's guides. Um, we also participate with other officers and fire departments and homeland security with the mandated lockdown drills for each school, and that has to happen twice a year, per school. Any questions about any of that? Okay. Detective Postal alluded to the relationship issue between school liaison officers and the school. It is the most critical piece of this puzzle. It is absolutely critical that a liaison officer has the right personality and the right temperament to come into a school and make a relationship with the student body, the staff and parents. If they cannot do that, they will not function well as a liaison officer. The four that we have in place right now are outstanding at this very thing. They've been able to identify relationships with the students, uh, foster those relationships with the staff as well, and generally have become part of their community. Investigations are school, in school are extremely difficult. Uh, as I mentioned before, there are certain legal requirements of an officer that they just can't walk into a school, grab onto a student, uh, interview them, reference a crime that they are investigating, whether they're a suspect or a witness. Um, there are juveniles until the age of 17. So, there are certain legal requirements for law enforcement. There's also school rules. The schools don't want uniformed police officers walking through their doors, ignoring their front desk requirements, walking into a classroom, grabbing onto a student, having a conversation with them. It doesn't work. Teens and pre-teens are who you're dealing with in schools, and historically, there's not a real great relationship between the police and young people. I just didn't think real highly of the police when I was a young person, they're always telling me what I couldn't do. And, uh, so the relationship is tenuous at best, and this relationship issue that Detective Postal was talking about has been changing that over the last 30 years. And the school setting, the school setting is a barrier to investigations. As I, we've already talked about, there's school rules or state laws, there's policies. Law enforcement officer can't just go in and do their investigation that they want to do, they have to follow a certain set of rules. So, it makes them a little more difficult than the average investigation. And how it works efficiently is through that knowledge and trust of the officer, staff and students and parents. The school liaison officers know the students, staff, they know their history, they know who they hang with, they know what they like, they know what they dislike. Many of them know what they drive as a car, who their parents are, what kind of living conditions they have. Those, that knowledge helps these school liaison officers investigate these complaints that are often very sensitive, and the students don't necessarily want to share this information with just anybody. They will confide in counselors, school liaison officers or principals much quicker and easier than talking to a uniformed police officer. This is an example, uh, back in 2009 at 5:25 PM, and I'd like you to note the time. Uh, this officer was off duty. Uh, this is his narrative of his report. On such-and-such day, I was checking my MySpace account, which I have to keep in touch with my students. I know that I had a message from so-and-so, and I have a report with him. The message was titled, "Expletive." Uh, this message reads as follows. "I am pissed and kid," and I can't repeat everything in there, it's pretty explicit. "Should I be his blank, 'cause he's spreading rumors that I'm a pedophile and I'm really not. I will kick his teeth in on the last day of school. He's upset me to that point, basically. If you want to stop me, I advise you to do it as soon as possible." You can read the rest, and somebody needs to die. The officer that evening contacted the principal. Principal af- well after hours, uh, worked with the, with the school liaison officer, told him where the student was, um, accessed records, the information was exchanged, found out he was on Beaver Island. Charlotte County Sheriff's Department was contacted, they went out and made physical contact with the student involved. Um, the school liaison officer contacted the mother of the student that evening as well. The mother said this guy is having a lot of psychological issues right now and is in a very bad state of mind. The student contacted the school liaison officer. This is what he said, "Thanks for helping me, I've had this problem for four days and wanted to end it, and I'm glad that you did that. I'm glad that I can look up to you anytime I'm having issues." What I want to show you is the difference in these two messages. The top message is extremely inflammatory, is extremely aggravated and agitated, and there is a problem with this student. He asked the liaison officer for help, he did it through MySpace account. He didn't talk to anybody else, he talked to the liaison officer. Then after the liaison officer acted, as he did correctly, the student felt that he resolved his issues for him and gave him a much less inflammatory message. Another example, uh, 2007, teacher found a five-page suicide note of a 14-year-old student. "Here lies so-and-so and, uh, good son and friend and many, may he rest in peace." And he listed his birth date and death date. Uh, "Look what you did, you horrible people, uh, what you did to this now explicit kid." Uh, the mother was hesitant to cooperate with the liaison officer for an unknown reason. The liaison officer pressed the issue, went through, over and above the mother, contacted the student and petitioned the student into mental health. When it came into time for transport of the student from home to the hospital, the student opted to ride with the, with the police officer instead of his own mother. And I think that's because the officer, there's a trust there, there's some familiarity there. He acted correctly and the student responded well to that. In terms of familiarity, back in 2000, September 2009, the school liaison officer sees a student driving a, in a driver's seat of a car. Uh, his report reads, "In my last encounter with this student, he didn't have a driver's license, nor did I know him or his family to have a Grand Cherokee." Uh, he gets a plate, follows up, Jeep was stolen from William Chevrolet three days prior. That's familiarity. He looks at a kid, that kid is not, does not have a driver's license, added to which, "I know his family does not have a Grand Cherokee." That's the kind of information these officers are getting, and really, the school staff have with some students as well. One of the things school liaison officers in this relationship allows is immediate access to resources in both directions. Um, as I was able to explain a moment ago, the school liaison officer contacted the school principal at like 6:30 at night. The school principal was able to pull that information up, provide it to the school liaison officer, and he acted on it. Very similarly, we have that relationship as well with the school administrators. I've had countless phone calls from principals, uh, Dr. Moore and I have spoken after hours all times of the day trying to solve problems, and immediate access to law enforcement is very important for school systems and very important for the safety of a school. We have immediate access with parents, they're contacting the school liaison officers about their children daily, routinely. Students contact the school liaison officers and ask them questions, they are a resource to them. Additionally, we have other tools and information at the sheriff's office that the schools utilize. The most profound and the most used is the K9s. K9s do about four unannounced searches a year. Uh, this is an example of immediate access to law enforcement that I pulled up from recent incident. Uh, March 2010, there was a forcible criminal sexual conduct between a male and female in a stairway to school. Assistant Principal contacted the school liaison officer, the school liaison officer and the assistant principal interviewed the victim and the suspect, suspect was arrested by 3 o'clock. One officer did that. If that school liaison officer was not there, this complaint would probably have taken days. But because the officer was immediately accessible to the school, he had the capability and the schedule flexible enough to deal with that complaint, he was able to take care of it in just over, under four hours. Another significant issue is that the school liaison officers are able to help with the threats of targeted violence. Um, each school has had these bomb threats or writings on the wall. Someone finds a note that says so-and-so is gonna die tomorrow, um, some specific threat of violence. These, although many of them turn out to be untrue or unsubstantiated, they are extremely resource-intensive. resource-intensive. You have as many as eight to ten officers at a bomb threat trying to clear a school with dogs. You have to block off entrances and exits. You have to make sure the perimeter is secure. You have fire departments involved in that, medical personnel involved in that. They are extremely resource-intensive. So what these school liaison officers are able to do, because of the relationships they have with the school, parents, and students, is they get information about how to settle that complaint quickly and effectively. If they're not there, students aren't inclined to say, "Hey, Johnny is the one that wrote that note," or "That looks like so-and-so's handwriting." You have to settle those things quickly and efficiently because the next day of school is an issue for us. And if we don't have it stopped or determined to be false or closed out by the next school day, the officers go, excuse me, go the next day to school, and they stand outside and make sure everything goes smoothly. Extremely labor-intensive. In terms of proactivity, the officer's presence obviously does stop crime. If there's any questions about that, I guess we can go on and give you descriptions, but I don't think, I think that says it for itself. And to see a police officer, it's in your mind, that guy's a cop, no matter if he's wearing a shirt and a vest or a uniform. They know who the police officers are, and they know where they are. Usually they know that they're on campus or not.
Could you, maybe you were already going to do it, but could you describe the day-to-day casual encounters and relationship between students and the officer?
Certainly. Day-to-day casual encounters. The officer shows up at school right now. They start at school. They go to school, they walk around the campus, they're in the cafeterias, they're in front of the schools greeting students, depending on what the schools want. Now, each school is different, and we allow the students, or the school liaison officers, to work with the building principals to determine how they want that interaction to occur. But the students walk around, they talk to the school liaison officers, very friendly atmosphere. They're just present. In the cafeteria especially during lunchtime, it's very important because the students see them, they have that interaction if they want it. It's not always solicited. Sometimes it's just, "I see him over there, he's here." Sometimes there's an actual conversation or some exchange of information that occurs with the student and the school liaison officer. But it's usually in a passing environment. It's not face-to-face, "I'm going to talk to every student in that school." They just know they're there. If they need to talk to them about a specific event, complaint or investigation, the school liaison officer will usually get permission from the building principal or the parent, bring them down to the office or their office and have a conversation with them behind closed doors. Is that kind of where you were headed with that? They do have the occasional interaction that is, you know, a citation is issued or an arrest is made. If an arrest is to be made, they try to do it out of the public eye for protection of the student's rights. If, you know, a citation is issued, they try to do it discreetly as well. But it is not a, right now, it is not a kind of a very much in-your-face law enforcement approach to policing in a school. It's very, they don't wear uniforms. You know, they wear the typical dress for a school liaison officer. It's very soft. It's a soft approach and very welcoming to student contact. And I, you know, when I was a liaison officer, I'd walk into students' classrooms and meet with the teachers and talk with the students during breaks. I'm sure that happens today as well. And that's why I say measurable contacts with students, direct and indirect. We can't tell you how many students are affected by law enforcement at the schools. We don't know. There's no way to judge that. I can tell you today, almost ten years later after I was a liaison officer, I still have relationships with the students that I was dealing with back when I was teaching there and when I was at the West High School. They know and develop those relationships. They like that relationship, and they want that relationship.
Nate, can I add something to Mr. Tank's question?
Sure.
When I was at West Middle School visiting the liaison officer, we toured the school, the cafeteria during lunchtime, and it's a busy place. And I was just amazed at the number of students who just came up and interacted with the liaison officer, not on the officer's part, but really the students seeking to interact with him coming from, you know, the other side of the cafeteria. And one of the things that was mentioned to me is that they're utilizing some of the social media interaction. I guess you mentioned on here MySpace and Facebook with one of the liaison officers. His attitude was, he set up the account. He's never once asked for a student to friend. I don't know how familiar you are with it, I'm limited, but you can, you know, look up someone's name, see if they're on there, and friend them. And he was never, said, "I'm not out there seeking for, you know, to put kids' names in and ask them to be a friend." And so all of his friends on Facebook are people who are students who have sought them out. And he had, I think at that time, like three hundred and some friends. And that really spoke to me a little bit about how much the kids are seeking out the liaison officer. As well, when we were at West Middle School for about forty minutes, the officer was so busy, the high school officer, that we barely had time to introduce ourselves and shake his hand. Quite busy with things. And when we sat down to have some lunch with the middle school officer, you know, I think probably not short of a dozen kids came up who remembered that liaison officer from middle school and had had interactions with that liaison officer to say, "Hey, how are you doing?" and so forth. And I very much appreciated seeing how the liaison officer was so, took some pride and satisfaction in knowing about the kid, knowing that they were doing well and on the right track and, you know, continuing with their studies and in a good spot and situation, considering maybe some of the interactions or some of the personal information that they knew about that student.
It is the liaison officer's responsibility to develop those relationships with staff, students, parents. And that is why they do the MySpace accounts. There's two reasons to that. One of them is to have that relationship, to have, a way to have dialogue, whether it's face-to-face or through electronic media. It's also a way for the liaison officers to kind of track the mood and the feel of what's going on with the students. And if there's something about to happen or has happened, they can say, "Let's go look at what's going on and what people are talking about," and it may give them an idea on who to talk to. And absent that relationship, the students aren't going to talk to them. They're just not.
Nate, I'm over here.
Sorry.
Nate, you speak a great deal about the relationship between the liaison officer and the students. How much interaction is there between the liaison officer and parents who call the liaison officer and say, "Help, I don't know what to do"? Can you?
Well, each liaison officer could address that independently, but I know it's routine. I have also spoken with parents when I was liaison officer. Just about every case, they talk, they have to get permission, number one, from the parent to speak to their students if they're a suspect. That conversation occurs all the time. And the parent has to be brought up to speed on the investigation, what are the possible outcomes, and at the end, what the outcome is going to be, and how they can renegotiate or reestablish a relationship after the outcome has been reached. So once that student's done and over with, once the investigation's done and over, they're coming back to school. There has to be a relationship with that student after they've returned. So all these things are talked about, and that is wiggled in and out with the school liaison officer, the student, and the parent. Every time we have a parent conversation with the student, it's always been positive, with rare exception. The parents generally don't want law enforcement involved, but once we are involved and they recognize that's a fact of life, they deal with it and work with the school liaison officer. Those relationships are very good, and you get calls from the parents after hours and say, "Johnny did this," or "Johnny did that." What can I expect here? And sometimes we can help them out, and sometimes we can't. But the relationships go well beyond that student's career at the school. Building future relationships, very briefly, I want to talk about this. That relationship issue I've talked about with the, is somewhat tenuous. You know, law enforcement, people think of police officers, they think of them behind their car with the red and blue flashing lights, coming in, arresting mom and dad. Something has gone awry in their life, and the police are there to take corrective action that they normally don't want. We're trying to change that relationship and have been trying to change that relationship for years. This is an area that we can do it in. This is a small community that allows interaction between students and law enforcement so that we can model that relationship behavior to these young people and law enforcement and model the behavior. So hopefully we have a future relationship that is much better than it is today and was many years ago. And I do believe that's working. Some of the specific school liaison officer activities are listed on this screen. Truancy, we'll talk about that in a moment. They participate in the threat assessment teams. If a student's in crisis, they are involved in that with the school. Class presentations routinely to talk about CSC laws and health classes, prescription drug abuse. They participate in expulsion hearings. They have parent meetings for security of students. They meet with the students specifically to talk about their behavior and how they're expected to act. And they do events for security. Sporting events, specifically football games, hockey games, and basketball games. The school liaison officers are usually there. Dances, homecoming, prom, and graduation. Not just the school liaison officer, but there are other sheriff's office resources that go to that as well. These are things that school liaison officers specifically involve themselves in on a daily basis. Truancy. A big part of the school liaison officer's job is to work with the Thirteenth Circuit Court and their truancy prevention program. And they, and now Central High School is on here, I'll explain that. If the Central High School student lives in the county, our officers take care of that paperwork. These are a number of truancies that have been listed from 2007 to eight to present. This is an important program. And the school liaison officers are very, they know the kids, they know the parents, they deal with the parents. It's not five different officers coming to their door, talking to them about their student being truant or attending school, it's one. And they can have confidence in that, or confidential exchange of information and a certain comfort level dealing with the school liaison officers. You want to say anything about this truancy there? More than that? Just the numbers alone. But it has, it is successful. I'm sorry? So it is successful, and I think it is important that one officer do that instead of passing them through the ranks of the sheriff's department deputies and having them handle the process of paperwork. Now to the funding issue. Back in 2004, county and the sheriff's department had several meetings about liaison officer program and how there at that point was a philosophical belief that the schools should participate in funding of the officers. Back in 2004, the schools were billed from October to December eighteen thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars for that quarter. And in 2005, we sent letters out to Mr. Philemon and Mr. Gallexon saying, "This is how we're going to establish the shared funding of the school programs." Started out in 2005 annually, eighteen thousand nine eighty-five per officer. For the sake of ease, if nothing else, we increased that three percent annually to cover increases in wages and fringes and the cost of doing business. Any questions about that?
Nate, what about before 2004? Because it seems like you said the program's been in existence since eighty-four or something like that?
Nineteen eighty. In those twenty-four years, the county paid for the school liaison officer program exclusively. All costs were incurred by the county. With the exception of, the schools have always provided offices, hardware necessary to have that communication between school liaison officers and staff. They've always provided us what we needed to do with business in terms of the schools.
Yeah. Nate, if I could, in 2004 was the year that the county had gone on the general fund and cut 2.2 million dollars out of the budget. Twenty-two positions were eliminated, and that's when we made the decision to ask the schools to help participate in that for the time these officers were in the schools.
Basically, the contracts read that the school's funding will be determined on wages and fringes of a three-year level detective. And these are the fringes listed that the officers have. Schools are billed with a formula of fifty percent of three-quarters of a school year. The concept here is that this is a partnership between the school and the county, so they will split the cost equally for the time the school officers are actually in the schools, which is roughly seventy-five percent of a year. They're in school from September to June, which is about seventy-five percent. In addition to that, there's seven hundred and twenty-five dollars in overtime that the schools also pay. Right now, all officers are above a three-year level detective pay. Their pay, overtime, actual wages and fringes are fifty-eight eighty-three. If you divide that in seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, that gives about twelve and a half hours of overtime, and these are some of the hours listed for liaison officers. Kingsley had a hundred and three and three-quarters. West Senior High had ninety-five point five hours of overtime. That is for Detective Polstal, and that is significantly understated. And the reason it's understated is because Detective Polstal has so many functions to go to. There are so many functions that, you know, hockey, basketball, football, and other programs that he does divide that among other detectives.
Nate, does the, the county, the county's basically picking up the other overtime?
That's correct.
So would that include the things like dances and football games and those kinds of things?
Other than the first twelve and a half hours, yes.
Does the city have a similar agreement with, do you know, with the schools for their overtime?
I don't know that. Captain Brian Heffernan from the City Police, there's no overtime?
There's no overtime.
Okay. Thank you. The funding received right in 2010, the billing is twenty-eight thousand nine eighty-seven for each officer, and that's billed quarterly for a total of one hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars to the county. And this is basically the cost of an officer. This is an estimate. That overtime figure, the second bullet, I took an average of twenty-seven to ninety-one hours difference in the twelve and a half hours. That's up to fifty-three hundred dollars extra overtime. Basic approximate cost is about eighty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. That's about what it costs. As I said earlier, the sheriff's department doesn't make funding decisions. We make decisions on how we're going to do business with the funding that we have. Today, this is how we do business, and we think this way of doing business is very good. It's very efficient, it works very well, and we've had extremely good success with it. So today, something happens at the school, the detective is contacted directly, the detective handles the complaint, the detective is on the same schedule as the students and staff. It's one officer dealing with one student complaint. It's dealt with very cleanly and orderly. If the officer needs to follow up, they do it on the same schedule that the student is on. One officer, one complaint. If funding is gone for the two officers and the sheriff's office has to make decisions on how that's going to occur, we're kind of put in a predicament. And that predicament is, what can we do? And how are these complaints going to be handled? Because regardless if these four officers are in these schools or not, the complaints I was showing you earlier, the forty-seven thousand complaints, they're coming. They're going to happen. There are some complaints that we'll be able to say, "We're not going to handle that complaint. We're not going to handle an out-of-control student. If they commit a crime, we have to handle that complaint." Somebody with a law enforcement badge on their chest is going to go to a school and handle that complaint. Forty-seven thousand in excess thereof a year. How's it going to happen now? It's going to occur. Reporting party calls 911 or the non-emergency number. The call is prioritized by dispatch, and the call is assigned to the closest available officer, which could be any number of officers surrounding the county. Michigan State Police, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Department, if it's in the city, city police. Closest available car takes the complaint. Depending on the day and time or the availability of witnesses, the officer will follow up or pass off that complaint. And the complaint investigation now becomes driven by a schedule of the investigating officer. If the complaint comes in at three o'clock in the afternoon, that's an afternoon shift officer. The student's still at school. But they make the complaint, an afternoon shift officer comes and takes the complaint. They work two to ten, or two to twelve. That school, or the student, is going to be gone the next day. Now the investigation becomes schedule-driven. And the patrol cars, the patrol officers- And the patrol cars, the patrol officers, are going to have to try to function within that complaint and deal with the students, catch them at home, catch the parents at home, catch witnesses at home, catch staff members at home. That is a major roadblock to these investigations. Already difficult investigations. This is some of the reasons why it becomes more difficult. The police officers are going to be unfamiliar with the school rules. They're going to be unfamiliar with the school's policies, procedures. They're not going to know the staff members. They're going to walk into a school and not know who the principal is, who the counselor is, social worker is. They're not going to know the staff, or the students, or the parents, and vice versa. The schools aren't going to know who's walking through their door, and it could be any number of twenty-three to forty-one officers coming through that door. The knowledge and trust that has been developed between the school liaison officers and the staff, students, and parents is going to be diminished significantly. And already difficult investigations just got a lot harder. Can they do it? Absolutely. When I talk about ability to handle these complaints, the way I, we have an opinion about how this could go and how it may go. We don't determine funding. The county board ultimately would determine county funding for the sheriff's office. We have twenty-three road patrolmen that are funded by the county. Eighteen CPOs, community police officers that are throughout the county. Eight detectives, eight sergeants. So we basically have forty-one call takers. Forty-one people assigned to take forty-seven thousand plus incidents. And the CPOs, depending, you know, we have East Bay, Southeast, Fife Lake, Blair, they're not going to be responding to West High School or middle schools. There is two East Bay CPOs. They may be able to respond to a call at the East Junior High. There are Garfield cars that could respond to the West Junior High. There is no Kingsley liaison officer, community police officer to respond to Kingsley. So, forty-one is generous. Our ability becomes significantly, is significantly diminished to handle those complaints. This is just a breakdown of the officer's schedules. They only work a hundred and eighty-one days. This is by contract. They're given three RDOs, regular days off a week. They have ten to fifteen vacation days, eight personal days, seven comp days, average floating holiday. So they have a hundred and eighty-one days to work. If you divide forty-seven thousand by a hundred and eighty-one, they're handling six point three nine incidents a day, and that day is about eight hours and twenty minutes after breaks and administrative duties. Now, at six point three nine traffic stops a day, you can do. But if you do one, take one complaint that requires any amount of investigation, the day is shot. If you draw a CSC, or if you draw an assault on that day, that six point three nine incidents a day means nothing, because they have just involved themselves for the next four hours into a complaint. So the sheriff's office's ability to handle these complaints has become significantly diminished. And unfortunately, you can't see this as well. I mean, you can. To give you an idea, of the forty-seven thousand complaints, twenty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-four complaints occur between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM. This is 2009 statistics to show us when the complaints occur by hour. Zero hour, zero hour, twenty-three hours is eleven o'clock PM. Almost twenty-three thousand complaints happened during the school day. If you take the complaints that the school liaison officers are already investigating, those seventy-one and a hundred and twenty complaints, depending on which school, and add that to the road patrol function, we're not going to be able to do it. You're going to see significant gaps in time between the time the complaint is reported and the time the complaint is investigated and concluded. In conclusion, any police officer can handle any complaint that happens at a school. Any criminal complaint absolutely can be handled by any police officer. State police, Traverse City Police, sheriff's office can walk in and do the complaint, with some exceptions. And those exceptions are criminal sexual conducts involving young children and anything that has to be handled by the protective service division or child protective services. Officers interviewing children have to be forensically trained, and most of our officers are not. Only a few are. So before they go handle a complaint involving a young victim, that victim has to be interviewed forensically. That's the one exception. Relationships, I cannot unpack enough. The relationship is what makes this work. These complaints are difficult complaints, but because relationships develop with staff and students, they are very efficiently closed out. Information sharing is going to be significantly diminished, and those special services are going to be diminished as well. We will not be able to respond to proms, graduations, football games, hockey games, basketball games. We can't participate in that because we don't have the funding or the resources. I think that's it. And since you didn't ask any questions, I'm guessing I was spot on.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions for Nate?
Or Captain Meacham either.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention to everybody, there is water and there's coffee back here in the corner. Please feel free to get up at any time and help yourself and the public too, of course.
Russ?
Nate, we've been told before that, you know, obviously this is a shared, shared expense between the schools and the county, and I don't know if I just made an assumption or somebody said, but I always assumed it was sort of a fifty-fifty thing, but it's actually more like twenty-five seventy-five, right?
The philosophy back in 2004 by the board then was that this is going to be a shared program between the county and the school. And so they divided it fifty-fifty, but only that portion of the school year that the officers were in school, functioning as a school liaison officer. So seventy-five percent of the year, fifty percent of seventy-five percent.
But you said the actual cost of the officers on the school is eighty-nine thousand dollars each?
Approximately. And the reason that is, is that the school contract, if you will, the agreement deals with wages and fringes only, and those wages and fringes are at a three-year detective level. The liaison officers that we have are beyond that level of pay, and that approximate cost also includes the vehicle, radio, equipment, firearms, radios, things of that nature.
I was either fortunate or misfortunate enough to be part of the discussions in 2004 when we came up with the idea of the fifty, fifty-fifty share cost. The discussion at that point is, was to actually eliminate the positions because we just felt we didn't have the money. But I believe the board then, and I believe the board now, is committed that these positions are absolutely essential in the schools for the safety of not only the kids that are causing the problem, but the safety of the majority of the kids that aren't causing the problem. So that's why they need to be there. You know, the, it's interesting, because we talk about the community police officers, the special policing officers, however we're terming it this week. When Long Lake Township, East Bay Township, Blair Township contracts a sheriff's deputy to be on, in their facility or in their community forty hours a week, they pay a hundred percent of the cost of those wages. What we're asking the school to do is pay fifty percent of that same cost. And, and the discussion always comes back in my mind, how do I make the argument to the school? It's okay, you won't have to pay anything, and we'll still give you a experienced officer confined to your facility for eight hours a day. When I go to Long Lake Township's board and say, "You want to continue to have an officer in your community forty hours a week, you need to pay a hundred percent of those costs." So, you know, it's, it's difficult, because we have so much demand on our officers, whether we're talking about our liaison officers, our detectives, our road patrol. And there's just, like everyone else's budget, there is not money to find, to fund additional positions. And we, the additional need is there, we just don't have the money. And we've, you know, we've bit the bullet for a long time and said, you know, we will continue to fund these as long as the school participates as a partner. If that partnership goes away, I'm not sure we can continue to maintain those positions.
Who next? Larry?
Well, I think what brought us to this point is that in a previous meeting, we had a discussion about this issue, and with all the information we're getting back from the sheriff's department, you know, we feel this is pretty critical to keep officers in the schools, because these incidences aren't going to go away. They're just going to continue to compound. So, you know, we believe, you know, the earlier we can address behavior in this, in that age bracket, which involves the school system, the better off we're going to be as a community, because if we don't address it there, we're just going to have to address it after they graduate. And so those matters aren't, are not, are not going to go away. And we see it as really a priority for this community, to have those officers in those schools. And, you know, given that we're all facing, you know, budget constraints and budget issues that, that are all driving us to these sort of decisions where, you know, we're looking for cuts and, and elimination of positions and those kinds of things, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to see, at least for the near, very near future, any improvement in, you know, state help and federal help with regard to our budgets. And even though your budget might be at a larger base, and we're, this year and next year and the following year, we're going to, we're going to have to make some tough decisions too, because we see some significant shortfalls. And I think what, what is bringing us to the meeting today is that we see this as one of the higher priorities in our budget, and we wanted some time with you, the both school systems, to really express that and, and hope you would take a viewpoint, or at least reconsider a viewpoint, that hopefully you would see this as a very important item for our community and within the school system and this partnership that we have, that you would take a second look at, you know, your budget and hopefully come back with something that we can work together with in terms of keeping these positions going. So, we just wanted an opportunity to, to lay the information out for you, let you know it's a priority. We have really deep concerns about discontinuing the program, and we're hopeful that, at least at this point in time, that you would give reconsideration to, you know, keeping the program going and helping us fund it.
You know, on behalf of the school board, I think I'd like to say that the fact that we made this recommendation, that the recommendation campus only made the cut, has no reflection whatsoever on our respect and appreciation of the program. We value it tremendously. We've heard from staff, we've heard from parents, the importance and significance of the program. And so, as I think Nate Alger began the conversation today, or his discussion, by acknowledging the challenges that face this, both school boards, I assume I can speak for, we have an anticipated eight million dollars in reductions next year. We cut the budget six million. And one of the philosophies that we had in making these recommendations, or making these decisions, was to try to keep the cuts as far away from this classroom as possible. And of course, we, as I said, recognize the significance of this program, but when we're cutting potentially teachers and aid, classroom aides, and building principals, it makes the decision much harder.
I would echo that as well. It's been difficult for some of the things we've had to prioritize. You know, student safety takes many forms, replacing the bus fleet, for instance. You know, getting students to school and home safely, that's something we've tried to put off because we've seen significant reductions in funding for a few years now, as have everybody else. But it reaches the point to where, okay, are we going to get them there safely, get them home safely? Riffs leaking that need to be replaced, just general maintenance that are safety issues as well. And that's where we're at, is it's getting to the point where there are no easy decisions left. And it was very difficult for us to reach this conclusion as well, but again, trying to keep it out of the classroom, reducing four teachers for next year. Our primary goal is to educate the students in a safe environment, and we're doing our best to continue to do that, but it reaches a point where these tough decisions have to be made. I would have a question. I know Crawford Osable Schools in Grayling cut their liaison officer earlier this year, but then found grant funding to replace it. I'm not sure if that's an opportunity, or if that's something that has been researched yet, but I don't know if there's any grants available?
There are, there are some grants available. And the difficulties we've experienced with the grants is you have, there has to be, with an existing program, the grants don't recognize that. There has to be a new program, or specific to the COPS rehiring initiative, they have to be vacant positions or recent layoffs. Now, we do have notification last week that the COPS program is soliciting applications, and if you applied last year, you can reapply this year. So it is our intention to look into that and reapply for a COPS grant if the county board sees fit to allow us to do that, to ask for funding for those purposes. But we don't know that that applies. The details have not yet been disclosed, and we don't know if that's even applicable to use of their funding. But it is a rehiring initiative, but what's required there, of course, is a layoff. We don't want a layoff. You know, selfishly, the sheriff's office does not want a layoff. But we understand that that may be a possibility. And so that, that is a potential grant source.
Well, Nate, I had it figured out before we started here, then you spoiled it all, because I just figured, well, we'll just cut from four down to two, let them roam around. But after, after hearing you, I don't think it would work very good.
It wouldn't work very well. To try to foster a program that is half-done, the energy and effort to try to make that work would not be worth it. I think that at this point, we would not be able to provide those services to the schools that they have experienced for the last thirty years. I think that the sheriff's office would have to make some very difficult decisions and reallocate resources elsewhere.
Does that mean that if the, if the county board did not vote to, you know, redo, you know, reallocate the hundred and fifteen thousand, if the schools are paying you now, that you would just scrap the program entirely?
That has been discussed by our staff, and that is the, basically the leading option, yes. Of course, we're going to ask the county board to continue to fund that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, I mean, but what you're saying though is that, you know, at this point in time, you don't consider a partial program feasible?
No, we don't. Captain Meacham?
Yeah, that was, that was my plan. I was selfishly trying to hang on to a couple people and a detective bureau in order to do that, address that. And when I sat down and started figuring out, if we lose these two, where we're going to put two back out to the road, which means that we wouldn't have to lay off two in the end. And then those complaints, in order to, just if I was able to keep, or hang on to do two, I would be able to handle the most sensitive of the cases that come through the school, not all of them, because they couldn't, two officers couldn't handle four hundred and fifty complaints, you know, in a year's time. And so, you know, you got to that point where, and then Tom Emerson, Captain Emerson, he's going to gain two, we're going to put two back, committee secretary out on the road patrol. He's going to lay off two, but then his complaint load's going to go up. And who's going to handle those calls coming in on base? So then, at that point, we figured we'd have to put another personnel to the road patrol, because we want to be able to handle all the complaints.
Do we lay off our least senior employee, and those employees are generally from the road patrol? So if, if the county determines not to fund the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, it's our assumption that that would mean two deputies are going to be laid off, and the two bottom deputies are on the road patrol. And the complaints are still going to come, that those road patrol officers are already handled. We believe those officers are already handling too many complaints, and they're too stressed. So to add that to the road patrol vision is not what we believe the best for the county residents or the sheriff's office.
And then you're basically paying a detective to be on road patrol?
Well, they would be, they would not, they would be a deputy at that point, back to the deputy classification.
Nate, is there a significant difference in the serious nature of complaints between middle school and the high school?
I guess I would have to ask in terms of serious.
Well, are, are the complaints coming from the high schools of a more threatening, violent nature than from the middle schools, or are they pretty much the same?
I think the numbers at the high schools of things that you would consider violent, so person, person crimes, the numbers are more. The acts, not necessarily so. Junior high kids are, a couple of those examples are from junior high kids today. They, they are equally as violent as a high school student in a lot of respects and in terms of what they think. Now, their actions and the ability to carry out those actions, maybe not, but they are, students are students. And once you get older into the high school, I think some of that behavior tends to go away, that violent tendency, just because they're aging and they're growing up. Now, there are some, you know, certain circumstances with some students in the high schools that have special needs that require that, that they are tending to be more violent, but that, I don't know if that's the case. You experience otherwise?
Yeah, I would echo the same, same thought.
Yeah, I would echo the same thoughts, and I, like, for some reason, this might open up, because we took ninth graders out of the middle school, junior high, and junior high schools. So, you know, Paul inherited, so to speak, Paul Graham, all that was causing problems, you know, definitely. So that might be some, you know, obviously some reason for our, for our case. I'm sorry.
Christine, was there thought that if we had to reduce the program, maybe have one liaison officer in each of the high schools as opposed to all four?
Well, I wanna, I wanna add to what some of my fellow commissioners have said, is I do believe it has to be a partnership. I don't believe that the county can share the burden by itself. That being said, you know, maybe we need to think a little bit outside the box and say, well, you know, let's take a look at the complaints. And I'm asking the school board to do the same thing. Let's take a look at the seriousness of the complaints, and maybe in middle school, it's not warranted, and maybe in high school it is. But I will say, I do believe strongly that it has to be a partnership.
Nate, what's the average response time during the school day for emergency versus non-emergency calls? If someone's out on a traffic stop in Long Lake Township, not a CPO, a road deputy, how long would it take usually, if someone's out on the road, to get to him in the next call?
Unfortunately, we don't have that information. We don't track response times. Dispatch would be able to if we had certain software. We don't track that necessarily, but I'm gonna guess, if it's an emergency complaint, like, we gotta get there within six minutes.
If it's a non-emergency complaint, which I have to assume.
Yeah.
Is there any estimate of administrators' time, principals' time to deal with issues at the school that might normally be handled first by or in conjunction with the school liaison officer? I have to go under the assumption from what I've understood to be the case, that our principals are going to have a bit more on their workload if there isn't an officer in the building. Do you have any estimate for that?
I want the principals to answer that. If a complaint occurs, liaison officer and the principal work together to start that complaint out. My experience, years ago, was that information, the strip of all, you knew what, that's at that complaint investigation. I would do all the work, give that information to the school, and do the processing of that. Now you're gonna have a patrol officer coming in as fresh, not familiar, any of the information can be provided by the principal. So the principal's gonna be born, involved, and walk. How, that's gonna happen, or how much, I don't know. It would depend on the number of students involved.
I'd like to go back and echo Mrs. Rich's comments in terms of the critical service of instruction, how we value this partnership and this relationship. Since I've been on board for the past five years, we reduced our operation every year, starting even two years before I came, there were reductions, annual reductions. We've now reduced our operations going into next year by fifteen percent approximately. Every year that I've been here, we've detailed all our expenditures out, and the police liaison has always been there. And for this period of time, we've been able to avoid that, cutting somewhere else. But we're down to critical service, we have been down to critical service. So we really value this, but if we impact what's happening in the classroom, then we won't be able to fulfill our mission of educating children, and that's kind of our dilemma. So, we really have valued this service, we found it extremely beneficial to us. But with that level of reduction, we're finding ourselves just having to make decisions that are, you know, aren't pleasant, they aren't easy. We have probably throughout the state, probably asking all employee groups to go back to the table and help us work out how to reduce, you know, our total compensation, benefits, whatever, more than any other area in the state, because of the level of service that we provide our students and families. So there's much at stake here, obviously, but we value that and we appreciate the invitation too, for you to be able to share us your perspective on that.
What do you think would be the unemployment cost? If you have to lay off some of your deputies, if you're bumping down road patrol costs, I'm assuming you'd have some unemployment cost, as well as if those officers coming into the school to interview minors, if they have to be trained in forensic interviews and conducting proper interviews? What would, how many do you think you'd train, and at what cost?
Oh, that cost is, it's a two or three-day school, you know, in general. The school itself is not pricey, it's only fifty to a hundred dollars maybe per officer. And so, that's not too bad, but in general, we have to send them away, we gotta send them up to Jane Ray or down to Lansing, and so, they bring their hotel, their meals, your time away, all of those types of things. And so, when we start having, and another day, we start having those officers do all of those extra things, well, then they're doing less proactive things also. You know, the road patrol has a whole set of proactive things that they're supposed to be doing. And if you give them more work, their proactivity goes down, they're, you know, having problems on Merple, on the road, or in itself, that proactivity goes down because they're tied up for, and not work to at the school or whatever. But there's, and it's not just, sometimes interviewing school, you don't just go to that and then just go right into sexual assault investigation. There's a, there's a dear of the officers and intense supervision over their cases. You know, and Paul can handle assigning somebody for a month. When you have a gentleman that's gonna handle sexual assault, they're assigned to somebody for a month, and they're going to more schools than, other than just forensic interviewing.
And we may not, we may not train more officers in forensic interviewing, that may not, we have the Child Advocacy Center, we have people that are trained in forensic interviewing, we may use them, but that is a schedule issue. The complaints are going to be driven by a schedule now. And that may not be important when you're looking at it on paper, but when a parent has a child that's been victimized and they want corrective action taken, they don't understand, well, the officer's gone for the next five days. They don't understand that, it means nothing to them, rightfully so. So that's the kind of impact we're gonna have here. Now, can we train every officer to be a forensic interviewer? Yes, we can, it's just gonna take time and money. But still, that scheduling issue is there, and we'll have that for several years. And unemployment cost, I don't know that, I would have to, I don't know, I'd have to give Dennis the nod on that, let him talk about that.
Yeah, I don't, twenty-six weeks of unemployment, I don't know what it would be, we'd have to do that. But of course, that's a, that's a one-time cost, and that assumes that there's no vacancies or there's no other means to employ those people.
Larry? For the ones of you that don't know me, I spent twenty-nine years in law enforcement. I was here thirteen years prior to school liaison officers, and I was here sixteen years after liaison officers. And I think Detective Postal really set a mouthful this afternoon. His description as a working officer in the schools, pretty accurate. I think under Sheriff Alger did an excellent presentation, and I think the reason we asked for this meeting was we wanted to talk directly to the board members of both schools. Nate spoke a little bit about the continuity of investigations, and being a cop isn't really any different than being a school board member or being a superintendent of schools. You have your task, and the task gets set on a priority basis. But it is very difficult, and where the major difference is, is the crime occurs. And if you don't have the liaison officer there that has the time, the experience, and the knowledge to take care of it, depending on the seriousness of it, immediately, quite quickly, your evidence gets cold, or disappears completely, or people's minds get foggy, which becomes very important in criminal investigations. I think there, and I'm not a school board member, I certainly pay my fair share of taxes towards the public school systems in Grand Traverse County, both Kingsley and TCAPS. But I think the school board members need to really look at where you can cut, other than the liaison position. You know, Denny Finch hired on six weeks after I did. I spent more time with him, first ten years of our career, than I did my wife, because he was my scout car partner in the old days. Not the fear, never been a cop killed in Traverse City. Well, I retired in ninety-seven, and late April of ninety-eight, Denny and his wife stopped out to my store, and had a conversation. I said, Dennis, what's the matter with you? You need to get out of there, it's a young man's game. Retire, you're healthy, get out. I just wanna finish this contract. He was a union steward for the sergeants. Well, on May twelfth, an individual, John Clark, who Dennis and I had met probably the first two weeks that Dennis was on the force, a man that had psychiatric problems, and as long as he stayed on his meds, he was fine. But the trouble was, John didn't stay on his meds quite often. He would go off, and a year prior to Dennis's death, I was the captain, we had confiscated all of John's guns, and it came time to give them back, and he and his attorney were in the lobby asking for them, and I said, no, I'm not gonna do that. I worked for Chief Safradini at the time, and Ralph was a pretty rough guy to work for sometimes. But anyway, to make a long story short, he went to the prosecutor's office, LaBelle called me, LaBelle said, are you crazy, come back his guns. I said, Denny, what's the difference? He's gonna kill somebody someday. Let him get a court order. And Dennis agreed. Took him two to three months to get the court order, by the time it went through the judicial system. But eventually, I'm at the counter in the old part in the jail today, and I had the choice of either giving the guns back or walking across the hall and becoming incarcerated for, to obey a court order. So naturally, we gave the guns back. I cannot stress upon school board members how important it is to have those liaison officers in the schools. And I know we're looking at cost, everybody's considering cost, educating students and so forth, but what good is it? And we'll pick on Kingsley right now, that's where I went to school. What good is it if, for the lack of twenty-eight thousand dollars, a student gets killed? Or in TCAPS, the same difference. You know, which child you have in your system that's worth eighty-six thousand dollars? That's the hard question. And I think the only decision of both boards, and I'm not speaking to the administrators, I'm speaking to the boards, you are elected to represent constituency of your areas. And I think Deputy Paul Postal said it really well. I'm really concerned about the safety of my child in school. And here you got a man that's walking to talk because he's in there. He's not where his kid is, but he's there, and he knows the dangers. So, when the Board of Commissioners had this discussion earlier, we would certainly, absolutely not want to see this go. But then again, we're in the same positions you are. We've got a lot of different programs, we've got a lot of different people saying, we need this, we need that, and we have to make tough decisions too. And back in two thousand and four, some of the older commissioners, Thomas, Larry, and Sonny were here, they made those decisions. And you know, the decision was, we need to go to the school board and ask for them to help us fund this program because it was that important just those few years ago, two thousand and four. And it's really been successful. I think the city's program, the county's program are excellent programs, and I think the school board really needs to go back and look under the cups, look everywhere, and find a few shekels that'll fund these programs. Thank you. Thank you.
I didn't hear about bullying, and from my recollection, that's a big deal in schools, maybe you've got another term for it. But I would think having a liaison officer would pretty much eliminate that, and not having one might mean there's a lot more of it. Do you have any comments going forward?
I think having an officer there, obviously, it indicates that with us there, we're not, we're never gonna eliminate crime, and so bullying's going to occur, but when it does occur, we do step in and we work with the students, the staff, the parents, the sociologists, psychologists, we work with them in order to stop it, because you gotta remember, we're gonna raise up each generation in this issue. And so, when we graduate ninth, or eighth graders onto Paul, well, there's a new set of sixth graders that just came in that same year, so we're gonna start all over, start with that bullying, and start with all of those types of cases all over again, and we're gonna train up the next generation, just like you guys are. I don't see it as ever eliminating bullying, but we eliminate it when it does occur.
So I just, I wonder how much heavier the load would be on school administrators without, just for that one thing alone?
For the bullying?
Yeah.
Well, right now, at the high school level, we have a smaller community, and the sole purpose is to create neighborhoods, advise rates, and academies, where we're taking that village of two thousand, fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred, down to smaller learning communities with students and teachers. And part of that should decrease bullying as well, as we do more personalization. The question that came up earlier with regard to if an officer off the street, if you will, is called to address the complaint versus the school liaison officer, it will take more time with the administrator because we're going to be dealing with someone who does not have the background knowledge that our present school liaison officers have. They have tremendous amount of knowledge about our students, their families. We're also going to have to be regarded about how much information we do share with regard to students and families, because if it's just someone coming in at a point in time who may or may not be following through the case, that will have an impact as well. We're in tough times, very tough decisions need to be made, and to the funding status for all of the parties at the table.
I must, I have to say, Mr. Feas started this, but back really shortly after the Civil War, when I was in high school, we had a school of three thousand students, it was just high school, they had one principal and one assistant, and that was it.
And a big paddle up.
I never saw a cop, because they didn't have the kind of problems they do now. It's a different age we're living in, and if we don't take care of the kids, we're gonna have bigger problems than we already got, so. I don't know what we can do.
Beth, is that?
And I, well, I just meant, our money man isn't here, so I, I don't know if there's anything we can offer without knowing how our budget stands, but to me, it's important. We gotta, we gotta figure something out, even if, even if you guys come up with some.
Well, let me just say, I'm, I'm pretty close to your money man, and.
I know.
You know, we just, with the, which we're all gonna face, you know, with the one point nine percent cut in assessed value that happened this year, we're facing three-quarters of a million in additional cuts in this year's budget, you know, after, after we did our cuts last year of the lost interest. So, you know, it's not likely, I mean, you know, unless you cut something else, you're not gonna be, or you dip into fund balance, you're not gonna be able to do anything with this. to be, or you dip into fund balance, you're not going to be able to do anything with this, I don't think, this year.
I just wanted to speak to Mr. Tank's question about asking about the bullying. The day I was at West Middle School, I do think that they impact bullying directly. I learned about, apparently, middle school boys were doing some, and I don't even know what they call it, you know. You probably do, because I can see the smile on your face. It was inappropriate, inappropriate touch to young female students. And this was going on rampant, I guess, with the boys in the West Middle School. And the liaison officer became aware of it and was able to end that practice for all intensive purposes and really address that. And obviously, that is a form of bullying and a form of intimidation. So certainly, they are able to impact it. You know, when we get out of the boardroom and start talking to people, I think what I've learned is, you know, I've talked with administration at the specific schools, talking about, you know, your principals, assistant principals, and staff at those schools, and they value the existence of the liaison officer in that school tremendously. And, you know, getting out of the boardroom, talking with the custodians, they know exactly what happens in that school. And told me, "I can't imagine the school without the liaison officer, Beth. We need the liaison officer here." A fellow parent, when I was at West Middle School, that I generally keep in touch with a couple of times a year, not that often, knew her from a playgroup years ago, her children do not need the interaction of the liaison officer. She's got kids that are not on any particular troubled path, good kids socially, academically. And she pulled me aside when she learned why I was there and said, "The liaison officer needs to be here." She said, and I was surprised to hear that from her, because her children aren't in that situation. But I would maintain that with the existence of the liaison officer, you're obviously impacting those children who need that interaction, but you're also impacting the educational environment of the children who definitely, who don't necessarily need the interaction of the liaison officer. And I know that you're trying to keep the cuts from the classrooms, and I respect the predicament that you're in, but I'd say, what about keeping these cuts from the students themselves? And, you know, how many students are you going to lose when there's a difficult situation at your school? And it negatively impacts other children? And you have parents who are very upset at the existence of it? How many students do you have to lose to recoup that money that you've spent on liaison officer? A dozen?
Russ?
I have a question for TCAPs folks, because in reading the newspaper, it seemed like maybe the situation at Traverse City Central was a little different than with the county liaisons. I got the idea that maybe the city liaison officer wasn't there full-time anymore? Is that correct?
Jane?
Jane, do you want to comment?
Yes, and I would, yes, we have had a unique situation this year. I'd like to refer to you on that.
Our situation is not that, although we all have funding issues, our school liaison officer ruptured his Achilles tendon and was off on a medical leave, so we've been filling that with road patrol officers, with detective bureau personnel, in an attempt to keep that presence up there. However, our school liaison officer has not been there due to a medical injury.
Oh, so that's the reason that you've been billing the school less than you had before?
Much less. When he got injured, we stopped billing the school, as we were just trying to fill it with supplemental officers.
Okay, so it was a happenstance situation?
Yes, sir.
And what's been the impact, would you say? What feedback have you received?
It's been huge. I think all of the examples ruled out would apply to the city, school as well. Our officers aren't familiar with the students up there, aren't familiar with the buildings, the parents, the staff. One quick example, the end of just last week, we had a young man who posted a thread on his Facebook page. He took myself, two plainclothes officers, two uniformed officers, Dr. Moore, the principal, Mr. Lindike, to find these students. We went through the typical, we went to their house. It was five o'clock at night. The young man didn't come home, spent the night with friends. We got his bus route. There were six buses that come over from West Junior High to Traverse City Central. We put enough people on to stop every one of those buses. We didn't want this young man getting into school, unbeknownst to us, but known to our school resource officer who was off injured. This man stopped taking the bus. He rode with friends. So we then got a radio dispatch that the young man was already in the school, saw one of our officers searching his locker. We didn't really know his associates that well, and our school resource officer, probably himself and a uniformed officer, could have been in the parking lot they'd been parking in, intercepted them before they got to school. It's just an example. They're just a tremendous asset. I've tried, because we're going through the same issue with our budget in the city, as well as the school funding, I've tried to have our school resource officer that's off injured kind of put some numbers together for me. And the number of computer-aided dispatch calls that we have, he says he can comfortably double for those that our dispatch never sees. I asked him for some type of numeric value to his impact, which he couldn't give us, obviously, but I think that's tremendous as well. We look, we're going through our budget process right now in the city, and we're trying to come up with funding. Our funding's a little bit different than the county's. Ours is a straight twenty-five thousand dollar per school year funding fee, no overtime. I've heard, well, why do you want to continue to fund that position? Not only do we think it helps, but our school resource officer also deals with the central students that go over to TBA Group Center, which is also located in the city, and also deals with those students that are duly enrolled with Northwestern Michigan College. So we really ask a lot of our school resource officer, and it's taken a number of officers off the street to be able to fill in his shoes while he's gone. You mentioned sporting events in the city, having Thrilly Field in the city, How Arena in the city. You see our officers there, but you primarily see our reserve officers in uniform. Our reserve officers have no rest powers. They're like every one of you sitting at this table here. They can't do anything if they're under the auspice of a certified officer. So our school resource officer was allowed to flex his hours to go to all of those sporting events, and then we're able to put four or five volunteers in uniform, not costing us additional monies to be able to cover those games. I'm not really sure how we can do that without a school liaison officer. Our reserve officers can't work independently, so now we're pulling an officer off the road, which we're down to officers as well, to be able to assist the reserve officers at the events. And we really haven't worked through the budgeting issue or the feasibility of that right now. So it's put us in a difficult place. We're trying to work through it, but it's not nearly as efficient or proficient as it was having an officer at Central High School.
You know, I sort of summing it up, as county commissioners, as elected officials, as school board members, I think we have a joint responsibility for providing a safe and controlled environment in our learning institutions as a community. And I am concerned that if this program goes away, you know, it would deeply reflect and affect our community. And for the sake of our parents and our students and your faculty and staff, I think it's important to have those liaison officers there, to make sure we have a controlled learning environment, and that due process takes care of the problem students in a quick and efficient manner. So I don't know how we can, as elected officials and representatives of the community, can walk away from something like this. I think that Commissioner Flee's kind of hit it on the head. Boy, if something tragic happened, and we didn't have an officer there, or an officer could have been there and have stopped, you know, a serious situation like he had on the screen, you know, a couple of serious situations where, you know, there were death threats or whatever, I mean, we would all feel terrible that, you know, a mere eighty-six thousand dollars or whatever, you know, we're all throwing into the kitty based on our portion as well, that something like that could happen for that kind of contribution, you know, from us, you know, together. So all I could ask is, you know, have you go back and reevaluate and ask your school board members, you know, what is your mission and your vision? You know, our mission here at the county level is to, excuse me, is to have a safe, healthy environment for our community. That's number one. So maybe I would ask you to go back and look at your mission and vision, and as a guideline to how you want to fund your budget. And if the safety and well-being of your students, your faculty, and your parents are number one, I think you can't walk away from this responsibility to fund these liaison officers. That's just my personal opinion.
The hard part for us, though, in a world of choice, is let's just say, for the sake of argument, that we reduce a third grade position, and our class sizes go from twenty-one to twenty-eight, and our neighboring district has class sizes of twenty-one, so we lose five students, multiply that by seven thousand. That's the problem when you get into those kind of discussions about, if you already feel like you've cut to the quick, what else do you do where you don't reach the point to where you start losing even more revenues? So rather than just focus on the expenditure side, which seems to be where we spend a lot of our time today, I'm curious, does the county have the ability to put forth a millage for liaison officer program to the taxpayers? And what would that be? Would that be a tenth of a mil? How much millage would it take to raise a hundred fifty thousand dollars?
I just did some quick numbers here. It would take approximately fifteen hundredths of a mil to fund the whole program. So less than two tenths of a mil to fund the whole program. County contribution, school contribution, add a hundred thousand dollars, you know, it's considerably less than that, obviously.
And that's the hard part, and I appreciate everything Larry said regarding, you know, taxes that go to the school and taxes that go to the county and whatnot, but when it goes to the mission statement, you know, the school's mission statement is to educate the students. The sheriff's department's mission statement is to keep the students safe. And so where we are truly in that, where we're overlapping somewhat, and I just feel most of this seems to be putting all of that onto the school boards. And I thought the point of us meeting today was to work together to try to come to solutions. And, you know, quite honestly, I feel like we're getting pretty beat up here. We're already getting beat up with our taxpayers, too, at our board meetings. A meeting like this at our board, we'd have sixty pairs sitting here. So I'm curious, you know, what else can we look at?
I got a question. The city police doesn't have any overtime. What if, this is a two-part question, what if we eliminated overtime? And I know you had it up there, but, and don't bring it back, but if we eliminated the overtime, how would that affect the process? Do we have to have the overtime, or would it be detrimental to the program if we didn't?
Well, the bulk of the overtime is dedicated to the extracurricular events, the sporting programs, and things like basketball games, football games, hockey games, dances, prom, graduation, things of that nature. Some of it is after-hours investigation and call-in, but the bulk of it for the schools is...
It seems to me that a lot of that could be charged back to the road patrol.
We have talked to the schools about that, and I'll give you a quick example as to why that doesn't work. Police officer in uniform, sitting back at a football game, does not know two students crossing the paths of each other have just had a violent interaction within the last week together, and that student is not supposed to be here. A school liaison officer knows, these two guys have history, and they're not going to have a very pleasant contact right now, so they can't have that contact, and they will take action to avoid that.
So Commissioner, what you were suggesting is if we looked at how much extra money the county's putting into the overtime, eliminated the overtime, and put that towards reducing the contribution from the schools. Is that correct?
Basically, I'm just trying to make the thing work.
Yeah, that'll be, it's about six thousand dollars, depending on the officer.
My opinion is, as mature and somewhat listening to all this, I'm, as a trustee, ready to go back and ask the board that I'm a part of to talk more about this, and hopefully ask our superintendent to work with the leadership of the county and the city to make this happen. I think, I personally agree that we can't drop it. It's too important to drop it.
Thank you, Fred. That was going to be one of my suggestions, is that we continue to talk. At least we've got until September to figure something out. And if it happens to be a millage, we'd better get our act together a lot quicker than that. You're not going to pass a millage. It's doubtful, anyway, but, Larry?
Thank you, Fred, for your comment there. Just a quick note, though, what Larry had said earlier, Inman, you know, it's not the omnipresence of the officer that is going to grab the person that has the weapon, which is going to injure somebody, whether it's another student. It's exactly what the undershift just said a few minutes ago. You've got a cop standing there, there comes two students, they're crossing paths. The ordinary cop, because he's not there daily, doesn't have any idea what's going on. But the liaison officer, because that's his bailiwick, that's where he spends his time, he knows exactly what's going on, and that is the importance to this program. That weapon, or whatever, the dangerous part of the school, never comes to reality, hopefully, if we have a liaison officer in that school system. Some of the places, I think, school boards, and like I said, I'm not a school board member, but could look to cut funding, and I don't know how much of your funds go to it, but sports, for example. Like I stated earlier, I went to Kingsley. We had basketball and track. That was all we had, you know, and I don't know that anybody that ever graduated in all those years are any less of a person today because they didn't have sports. But like Superintendent File said, our business is to educate children. And I agree with him, a hundred percent, and so did Lynn. We need to educate the children. Sports has a certain portion there, but I think there's a lot of places budgets could be cut. And it's just like here, sitting on the county board, we're going to have to make some cuts, too, and it doesn't make people very happy when we do that. As far as a millage, the septic fiasco that we've been dealing with, we've learned one thing, restoningly, and that is, we don't want any special assessment. And we're talking forty-four dollars a year for clean water. People don't want to hear that. And I'm not so sure they want to hear about a millage for liaison officers, you know. Last resort, we could try it, but I don't know necessarily that it would pass. But I think Mr. Tank's exactly correct. Both boards hopefully can go back and really take a hard look and see, you know, where they can cut.
I have a question.
Sure.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Loya has stepped out, but one thing that I heard him reference is that the county may be needing to look at cuts as well and look at fund equity. I think it's fair for all of you to recognize that our board made a very conscious decision. We were faced with reductions of eight million, eight million, to take two million out of our fund equity. And then we made six million in cuts. Further, there's been referencing this afternoon to the possibility of grants. Fifteen years ago, we were able to access grants through the school liaison program and are no longer able to because we've developed a model program here in our community. It may be time that in order to come back and be able to access the grant... It may be time that in order to come back and be able to access the grant funding in the tough times that we are economically, that we're at a point where action needs to be taken to eliminate the program so we can then reposition ourselves to get grants. There's one other area that you may want to consider, and that would be, I'm sorry, I cannot recall right now, but there is funding that flows through to the courts that is called child something?
Childcare fund.
Childcare funding that may or may not be appropriate to be tapped for this.
I'll really check that one.
So I would urge you to consider those things as well.
We have looked into that, that last one that you mentioned.
I thought we had, and I thought we found that we couldn't use that money for that purpose.
And the childcare fund costs us how much a year? About a million dollars?
About a million, two a year.
That's what we're already paying.
For our share.
Yeah, for our share.
You know, another thing undersheriff Alger said, and Sheriff Bensley said when they talked to the board quite a while ago, we said, well, what's your relationship with the administrations in both schools? Absolutely wonderful. In fact, I think if we'd have asked them, do you really want us to meet with the school board, their answer would have been no. We get along fine with the administration. We have an excellent relationship. But it was the board members that wanted to have this meeting, I think against probably the sheriff and the undersheriff's wishes.
Yeah, I guess the comment, and I'm sorry if you feel that we're trying to beat up on you because we're in the exact same situation. You know, our budgets are getting, our income is getting smaller, our demands for service are getting larger. You know, in your case, at least your student population remains about the same. Our demands for service become larger every single year. And we have continuously looked at our budget and talked about using how much of our fund balance we're willing to expend and what we can and cannot spend out of that fund balance. We've talked about, you know, historically, we've talked about a public safety millage that could help us to help fund the sheriff's department. Remember that our sheriff's department not only provides liaison officers, they do road patrol, they do marine patrol, they do dead body investigations, they recover bodies, they do search and rescues. You know, all of those are part of our process. And that's just our sheriff's department. And then you add to it what kind of programs our health department does, and the youth care centers, and health centers. We just opened a new one in Kingsley. Huge success stories coming out of there, but those things come with a price tag. This board is going to do just what you are doing, and we already have done it on multiple occasions, but with the notices that the assessments are going down, and we're going to get a lot less than we anticipated, each one of us has been asked to take your budget and go back through here and try to look and see what we can cut out of our 2010 budget, our current budget. And we're going to start within the next month or two developing our 2011 budget. And we're asking every department head, from the sheriff to the IT director, okay, tell me everything that you do, exactly how much does it cost and how many people does it serve? Because that's the way we're going to have to make the decisions of what's the most important for this community as a whole. There's a lot of great programs that we operate, and they serve a group of people, but the question is how many people do they serve for what it costs us? You know, and we're going to have to make those same tough decisions. I was here when we made those decisions in 2003, and there were a lot of tough discussions and a lot of nights that none of us went home sleeping very well, I'm pretty sure. And we're back there again. And we'll be there again five years from now, 10 years from now. Those decisions are still going to have to be made.
I would like to, you know, this has been very valuable for us to know that we have a shared concern here in terms of how to be as preventative as we can because we recognize that's the best use of dollars. It's important, I believe, before we leave, that you understand in terms of the impact of an educated child. It's my understanding through research that they predict prison populations based on a literacy rate at third grade. I mean, we really should be pushing for universal free preschool. I mean, we've been attempting, and we're not 100 percent yet, but that's our goal. And the more we accomplish that, the much greater return, and the less of the impact we have later on. The kids have more to value because we've equipped them, you know, to do that so they don't get into the problems and we diminish that. So the greatest return that I see in a preventative is investing in that child through their education at the youngest possible age and the building on that. Now, that's much more long-term, but that truly, I think, has a way to diminish a lot of the issues that we're dealing with later on in life. So these are real issues, and we're still not because we don't have free preschool. We're having to charge for it. We just, as you probably are aware, move to all the everyday kindergarten, and the results of that are already showing a significant gains. And so we're very much trying to leverage a very limited dollar for the greatest return possible. You know, but we're here and having to deal with the present, we've got issues across the board. And so we have been trying to continue to find those resources that we still don't have. And another thing that I would encourage all of us to collectively get into is to fight for equity in school funding. Because truly, we are at a disadvantage because of our shortcomings based on how the state has structured the funding of public education. Where many schools that our size, who are doing everything that we're doing, and we're competing with all of them, are getting our size 20 to 40 million dollars more on an annual basis. And so again, I think this is beneficial by coming together because there are many issues here that we can come together and fight collectively. And we've already demonstrated that we're getting a return when we come together. So administration values this in terms of being able to sit with both boards, all boards, collective boards here in terms of a collaborative effort to figure out how to leverage limited resources for the greatest return possible.
And I'm just reacting as a parent, not necessarily as a board member to what you're saying. And, you know, I'm a whole lot less concerned as a parent that you have my child at three and four for free preschool than I am that you keep them safe for the seven years that they're in school, from sixth grade to 12th grade. You know, the one thing that I disagree, respectfully disagree with you, Mr. File, is that this potential cut is keeping it from the classroom. I don't think it is. I think it is right keeping it. It is very much impacting the classroom and impacting the student. And I'd say, Mr. Tank, as a commissioner, I am fully committed to continuing our partnership of that 37 percent that you pay and the 63 percent that we pay. Fully committed to continuing that funding. And I appreciate your willingness to speak with your board about reconsidering that.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to close out the sheriff's department's perspective on this. We've had a very good working relationship with Mr. Gallexon, Mr. Nossadis, Mr. Knutson down in Kingsley, Mr. Hartman, the elementary school principal, Mr. Phalen, and Dr. Moore, Mr. Tabaldi, I worked personally with for four and a half years, Ms. Alfieri, and Mr. Soloway. These people are professionals, and those schools are outstanding schools. And they're outstanding schools to work with and in, with them, with their students, and with their staff. It was a great experience for me personally. These liaison officers relish that relationship because it is such a good environment. It's a good environment because in large part, these administrators have done that work. We are a piece of that. But the overwhelming majority of the success of these schools rests on these folks' shoulders. And because of that, we will continue to work with this administration and entertain options and ideas. But I did want to say that because I don't want you to feel that we have somehow diminished that relationship because that is not the case. We've absolutely had a great working relationship for a lot of years. And I appreciate that. And thank you for the boards for coming as well.
Thank you. I think this was a great session. Let's see what we can do to solve our problem. Anybody got anything else? Ralph?
Comment?
Yeah, that's right, we have public comment. Well, you see a look out here, and you don't see that many public.
I was just waiting. It was really interesting listening to this dialogue. I was a police school liaison officer back in the 60s, and at that time, at that time the priorities were prevention, education, criminal investigation, and rehabilitation. That's what police school liaison officers worked on in the schools. Before that, I was a teacher, and that's what got me interested in the liaison program because I thought, damn, that's pretty good, I'd like to try that. The issue that I hear here today, a couple of good words that came out, by the way, is partnership, you know, because I think you have to sink and swim together when you talk about a community like ours. And I sat on your seat. In fact, I was one of the people that talked the schools into having liaison officers in. And we put the one in the city, and at the time, I was with the sheriff's department and the city police, and we had one already at West Junior High, and supported the former sheriffs when it came to West High School and East Middle School, and of course, we had it at West. The one thing that I hope you walk away with this is that, yes, you do have to educate kids. But when I sat on that board, safety and security was a big issue. And they have to be in a safe and secure environment. And that came up by a parent who happens to be a county commissioner too. That comes out with me. You know, I have six grandchildren that are in your system. I want them to be safe and secure. I don't want to have them to have to worry. And if we sit here and say rape doesn't happen in the schools, drugs don't happen in the schools, and assaults don't happen in the schools, check in the last six months and see what you got. And you have all of those things that are happening, and you're symbol responsibility. If I were the parent of a student that had, was sexually assaulted in a stairway in the school, I'm telling you what I'd do. I'd go talk to an attorney the first thing. We have an obligation to work this thing out. $100,000? You're talking about $100,000? One child is worth more than that? And I sit here as a citizen in the community, I'm saying to you, why would you quibble over this when you know it's important? You talk, well, I have to cut here, and I have to cut there. It's a matter of priorities. What's important? Is it important to have your kids safe in school? I'm telling you that it is. You know, do you ever think about having cameras in your school back when I was teaching? You know, we talked about, you know, we talked about, when I came on as a police officer, I never dreamed that I'd have to be trained to have a lockdown in an elementary school. Never dreamed that. That's an everyday occurrence. Think about this. Sure, it's a partnership, but we all have to pay. It's going to come one way or the other. And I hope, and Fred, thank you very much for going back. And of course, you know what, dealing with some people don't want to do what you want when you worked out on the island. You know, there are some folks that just don't want to obey things when somebody comes along. So I hope you come to conclusion with this. I know I certainly do. I know that as long as I'm sitting where I'm sitting, that I will fight to keep our liaison officer in our school. Because I think it's important. And I think that you do too, but you're trying to quibble. Where are we going to get this or get that? The thing to remember is one of your top priorities is the safety of those kids. Thanks.
Thank you, Ralph. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved. So moved. It's board.
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming.